I should be quiet while I'm ahead. Just wanted to talk to you very briefly about open meetings training. That is a specific requirement that came down a couple of years ago that required all boards to have somebody present who is trained in what's involved in open meetings. Now, of course, what's involved, it's not just a matter of, oh, your meeting has to be open, but there are certain processes you need to follow, certain times when an agenda needs to be out, and then there are 14 reasons why you can close a meeting. But when you do it, there are certain processes and procedures to be followed, just so everybody knows what's going on. The whole idea is the people want to be, should be able to observe your deliberations and what's going on. So, last year, what came into effect in the last General Assembly was passed, is a little bit of an enhancement to the training where, as opposed to you used to just have a staff member who could be trained, and that's what almost all of us, all municipalities throughout the state did. That changed by requiring a member of every board, somebody has to be, A, designated, and then trained, and go through some sort of training. There is an online training through the Maryland Attorney General's website. It takes a half hour, 45 minutes, and then there's a test, and if you're not successful in the test, you can go back and take it again. Again, the idea isn't so much pass or fail, but that you understand what the processes are. Also, there are trainings, and in order to be trained, basically, it has to be a certified training through the Academy for Excellence in Government, and that involves MML and the Maryland Association of Counties as well. In any event, they do trainings at the MML convention, at the Mako convention. Who can give those trainings? They have to be what, quote unquote, "certified." I am one of them, which my wife's comment was, now you're certified, we knew that. Why did it take that to do it? In any event, she was just being funny, which is very nice. In any event, I'm certified, actually, there aren't that many, partly because you do have to come around quite a bit sometimes to provide trainings. Not everybody's got the time to do it, but we try to work with it. The Assistant Attorney General with the Open Meetings Compliance Board is trained, and then the Frederick County Attorney, John Mathias, is also one of those trained, and certainly if anybody else is interested, there's a process you can go through, but you have to be a local government attorney in order to do that. In any event, the three of us then do provide trainings as available, again, at the, at MML and Mako, so look for that this summer, and also in the fall. Last fall, there was one at the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, there was one at the Legit Conference, that's your basic insurance, they have one in the fall, and there are others. I know there had been some discussion about it in Frederick, but I don't think a formal request came forward. There is going to be one probably in the Prince George's area sometime in the spring. These are open to anybody, so it's not just at the conventions, we understand it gets elected officials, but the basic way the law works is if you have a board and it does not have somebody that's trained and nobody that's designated, the problem is they won't be able to meet in a closed session. There's no way for them to do that legally. That may not affect an advisory committee in any way, why would they need to meet in a closed session, but your Board of Appeals might have to, your planning commission might have to. For those of us that have a historic district commission, it's possible. Maybe it's infrequent, but it's possible you want to have that option. So, the reason why some of these other trainings are available are also to pull in folks that are on appointed boards, and those are fairly nominal fees, but there are some of that involved. As I say, just keep an eye out there, and if it does get to be an issue where you don't have a training available and you do feel the need for it, hopefully with some of the trainings we've had, we've addressed some of it, but if there is that need, reach out to MML and let them know, and they will work with us and see what we can get scheduled.
Frank?
And that was mostly what I wanted to...
Do you know, is it on, and I should know this since I'm on the committee that did it, is it on the MML agenda for the summer meeting?
There will be, I know that there will be some, but I don't know exactly what the timing is.
Because I remember I asked for it last summer, and I was told they couldn't get it for last summer, so they did it last fall, and I can't remember whether or not for the summer, so hopefully it will be, and then we can all sit in on it, probably.
And what I would say is it's planned for the summer, of course, things could change, but right at this point, it is planned for the agenda.
Okay, good, good.
And as far as us all sitting on it, and that's all well and good for all of us that go, but generally, we bring a commission member and a staff member, and we need all the commission members. I know two in the audience, Bill Buds and Roxanne, have actually went through the training, and from the feedback that I received, online versus training itself, the training itself is better, so I've had a few conversations with former Mayor Johnson and MML, forget his name now, from Berwyn Heights, gentleman Tom Reynolds.
Tom Reynolds is somebody with MML that will...
Right, and I'd asked him if perhaps that we could offer up Mount Airy as a central meeting point, so we could bring all our commission members here, and if other people from Middletown or wherever wanted to bring their people in.
Or statewide.
Yeah, statewide, whoever's local to Mount Airy, that we could get that enhanced training, so we look forward to that, and we appreciate you taking your time coming all the way up from Gaithersburg.
Sure, sure. And they'll see what they can schedule. I mean, they don't want to schedule so many that it detracts on having it at the conventions, because they certainly have that as a priority, but they do understand the need to reach out beyond just the electeds and a couple of appointed that attend them, so that's understood.
And one of the things that I don't know if it was highlighted during your explanation, but the rules have actually gotten a lot stricter.
Yes.
And that's what we have to be careful as a community. What we used to do and we thought was okay on emails is no longer okay.
Well, sometimes it is, but yes.
Right, but we have to know the difference.
Again, it's just the training requirement that has called for a lot of that, so.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you for updating.
Say hi to Donna Dare for us.
Yeah, it's a Don Reesetah hi.
All right, we have no presentations. We have approval of the December 4th minutes and the closed meeting minutes. I will move that we accept both. Is that a second from you, Bob? The guys, if you can pull your mics down, just...
Yes, that was a second.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have a discussion on that topic? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, looking in at Mr. Me. All right, police report, chief.
Start off with the chief's report. I'll go into our December performance and so forth. During the month of December, we issued 41 citations, 69 warnings, 13 repair orders. We had four DUI arrests, one traffic arrest. We handled 824 calls for service, and we had three criminal arrests and issued three civil citations and wrote 68 reports. Quarterly, for our first quarter of the, or for our first quarter of operations, we issued 117 citations, 288 warnings, 58 repair orders. We had six DUI arrests, three traffic arrests. We handled 1,777 calls for service. During that three-month period, we made 17 criminal arrests and issued 15 civil citations. Our performance during January, we issued 27 citations, issued 60 warnings, 30 repair orders. We had one DUI arrest, one traffic arrest. We made 78 total traffic stops. We handled 1,026 calls for service, and we made seven criminal arrests and issued one civil citation and wrote 69 reports. So, it was a fairly busy month for January. During the month, we attended several meetings and trainings, so we had five meetings and one training session during the month. One meeting was with the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau regarding their connecting youth program. I've actually attached a flyer that was presented to me, and basically, in a nutshell, what this program does is connects youth between ages of 16 and 24 to services, if they're not in school, or they're not working, or they may be homeless. So, that's some information that when we go out on calls, we have this information available to us, we can refer people to services that they may need when it comes to youth in Carroll County and so forth. When we get to the next piece, I want to first have someone, I want to introduce someone to the town council and the town employees. Major Hart, would you stand up?
Welcome. Glad to have you, Major.
This really tall gentleman and me go back a long ways, so. He's one of our partners with Carroll County, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and so forth, and we've known each other many years, and we've worked together in the past, and he's, great to have him, be on board with him again. And that takes me into my next topic. We want to talk a little bit about the police mutual aid agreement that we engaged in There's been some discussion that we've heard that people feel that we're responding to calls outside of town. Basically, that's not accurate, it's not an accurate statement. Basically, what happens is there's, you know, we respond to routine calls for service within Mount Airy town limits. We don't go out and handle routine calls for service outside of that jurisdictional boundary. We do, if our investigation takes us outside of town limits, we may end up outside of town handling an incident that resulted as something occurred in town. Now, we may respond to limits under certain circumstances, and we've entered again into this memorandum of understanding with Carroll County and the Sheriff's Office regarding mutual aid as it's permitted under Criminal Procedure Article 2-105, the Antae Code of Maryland. The memorandum of understanding with the Frederick County Sheriff's Office is currently under review, doing the same thing with them. And what this basically is, these mutual aid agreements permit agencies to cross jurisdictional boundaries under certain circumstances involving what they call emergencies. When we look at the word emergency, it's used in the criminal procedure articles, basically, it's something that's not limited to, but it's usually someone who's an unruly person or group, or demonstrates a potential for violence, a hostage situation, a fire, a flood, an accident. These are circumstances where prompt police action is required, and also if there's other equipment or something or services that we can provide to the sheriff's office that they may need from us and so forth. Again, this isn't something that's new. I would say all the jurisdictions in Carroll County, all the municipal police departments have entered into these agreements with the sheriff's office, as well as the ones in Frederick County as well, so. And that's why I'm here, you know, Major Hart's here tonight. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask him, not to put him on the spot, but I think if...
I can just walk in.
So, basically, it's for emergencies, it's not for routine calls for service, it's not if someone gets their mailbox smashed, or someone steals something from their house or from their vehicle, it's not for incidents like that. It's for something that's a critical emergency that requires a quick, immediate response, and if we happen to be the closest in the areas, we're the ones that get the call, and it's normally just to go there to secure the scene until the sheriff's office or someone can get there to handle the call.
Chief, I want to thank you for that clarification, because that did come up at the last meeting, and there was some ambiguity about how that was going to work, and it was good clarification, we totally expect that, so, good job. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Major.
Major, thanks for coming out.
With that said, a couple other incidents, I would like to welcome, or a couple other things I'd like to do is welcome aboard, we have PFC Daniel Bridges and Police Officer Alex Saroy that have been hired by the police department. They're not here tonight, I'll be bringing them to a future meeting so they can introduce them, we can introduce them, have them sworn in and everything. But both of these officers come as lateral officers from the town of Tonny Town. They're currently in field training with us, and as soon as their uniforms and everything come in, we'll be getting them in here to introduce everybody.
Our attorney's brother is the mayor of Tonny Town.
Cousin. No, cousin. His cousin's the mayor of Tonny Town.
I knew they were related.
So, we're stealing from his family.
Next issue is for our community outreach program. Talk a little bit about what we call the Mount Airy Police Community Services Initiative Program. I had a meeting with Councilman Hushour and volunteer and police support Wayne Harris here, who's here tonight to talk a little bit about this, and this basically is regarding an implementation of a 501(c)(3) status with the police department for fundraising and donations and so forth that the police department, that's, I'll turn it over to Councilman Hushour if he wants to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, and I'll point it, Wayne, could you stand up, please?
Yes, sir.
So, this is Wayne Harris, and Wayne and I went up to the community foundation up in Carroll County to meet with Audrey Semino, who's the director of CFCC, to discuss a way, they're an umbrella organization, the Mount Airy Community Fund is under them right now, MAMZA was for a short time, but they basically are operating with the Westminster Police Department in a similar fashion, where they're the umbrella for a 501(c)(3), which allows people to make donations to the police department for things like shop with the cop and other programs, the coffee cups, the stickers, the whatever you guys need, also equipment, things that people are willing to donate for that may not come out of our budget. So, Wayne's going to end up being the senior advisor to this 501(c)(3), and he has a handful of businesses that are interested, and unless anyone objects on the council, and we can talk about it later if you want, I was just going to kind of liaison, keep you all informed on what Wayne's up to. Of course, the chief is involved in it, but...
I do have to make an announcement to the chief there. Sorry, chief, but we had to eliminate one of the words on our fund because we couldn't write the entire fund on a check, so the initiative, they decided to come off, so, sorry, sir.
So, it was kind of hard to make a donation.
Yes, but everything else is good on that, though.
Rider's cramp. So, but anyway, it's, I think Wayne has a meeting set up for February 13th.
Yes, sir. Yep. Got an advisory committee standing by, so hopefully, you know, everybody will show up, and they're act, you know, some business people, some local people, and they're willing to pitch in and, you know, give us a hand, so.
Yep.
This will be good.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
It works good for Westminster, so I think it will for...
This is something to be excited about, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
And what the Mount Airy Police Department is with all these calls, it's unbelievable, so things are rolling there.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Yep.
Wayne, the only comment I would have, that once this gets underway and we decide what funding, being the CFO, I'd like to understand where the money's going, where it's coming from, so we don't have separate departments expending money without us knowing about it.
Yeah, we'll present a report.
Thank you.
Good.
Finally, for the seedings report, there's just to go over a couple significant events and crime trends in town. During the month of January, we handled four commercial burglaries in town, and these appear to be related to some others that might have occurred in Frederick and Howard and Baltimore Counties, as well as Carroll County. They're of very similar nature, so I'd like to ask all the business owners in town to make sure that their alarms are in working order and their surveillance systems are in working order, because a lot of times, that helps us develop leads in a case and so forth, that we can share information with our other jurisdictions. Additionally, we also had two vehicle thefts from town, and there were two others that were attempted. So, again, everybody make sure to keep their cars locked up, keep valuables out of sight and so forth, make sure they take their keys in, don't leave them in the vehicles and so forth. And again, if anybody sees any suspicious activity, we're asking everybody to give us a call. Sooner we can get the call, the quicker we can get somebody out there instead, you know, happening to come by the next day or something like that, so. And that's the chief's report. Anybody have any questions?
No, just again, thank you for a great job. I'd love to see that you're giving a lot more warnings than actual citations, people are getting used to you. We're hearing a lot of compliments about your community service outreach, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right, up next, Volunteer Fire Company report.
Bruce.
Bruce, you're back. I mean, you told us, you told us that you were done with us, you weren't going to come here anymore.
Well, they have to figure something to do with those old past presidents. I bring greetings on behalf of the new president of the fire company, Dan Caola, and also the fire chief remained Kenny Stalls, so no change on chiefs, just changes president. And Dan has been going to our county association meetings, which are on the same schedules as the town council meetings, and so he wanted to continue with all the activities that are going on there, so he asked me, because of my other activities with the town, with elections and things, if I would want to continue to come to the meetings, and I said sure, and so I'll be doing that report and serving as the liaison for that. We had quite a busy month. I don't recall a time when we've had so many house fires occurring. Matter of fact, Westminster had one today again, all over the county and in the area, so hopefully we'll get over that. For January, we had 93 rescue calls in Carroll, 66 in Frederick, 12 in Howard, and one in Montgomery, for a total of 172 rescue calls. Fire calls, we had 18 in Carroll, 17 in Frederick, and three in Howard, for a total of 38, which gave us 111 calls for service in Carroll, 83 in Frederick, 15 in Howard, and one in Montgomery for 210 calls, so it was quite a busy month. I also have the report for 2017, and I'll just summarize that. We had a total of 1,867 rescue calls and 323 fire calls. So, that resulted in 1,296 calls for service in Carroll, 774 in Frederick, 91 in Howard, and 29 in Montgomery, so we responded to 2,190 incidences last year. So, if you look at on our webpage, you can see each year it goes up a little bit, unfortunately, so it's been very busy for us. Fundraising activities, we have the Country Breakfast on the 18th, and we will be having our spring, although it's in March, dinner on March 4th, and we're going to try something different with that, and that's going to be buffet style, so hopefully it won't be as crowded to get people through that. I also wanted to bring to your attention, especially for those of you in Carroll County that may have been reading in the newspaper about the enabling legislation related to the fire service. What this is, is that the Carroll County Volunteer Emergency Services Association, which is our county association of the fire companies, we realize that with the increased demand for service, the availability of volunteers, the need to have paid personnel in almost all the stations, it's getting to be quite a bit for 14 fire companies to manage. And so, we approached the county commissioners to create enabling legislation that would allow the county commissioners, if they so desire, to assume responsibility and administrative direction of fire, EMS, and rescue services in Carroll County. Currently in the county charter, they don't have that responsibility or authority. And so, we met with them, we came up with wording for enabling a legislation that was taken and presented to the county legislative delegation, they unanimously approved it about a week ago, and so that will be going before the General Assembly. I don't have a bill number or anything on that yet, but that will be going to the General Assembly as a local bill, and hopefully, once that is passed, we can move forward with that. We already have a working committee consisting of representatives from the Firemen's Association and the county government working on this. We have an advisory council of representatives from all the 14 fire companies that are revising the working group, and so we've sort of put in place a structure to work towards this type of a transition. This doesn't mean that the volunteers are going away, or that our firehouse is going to become a paid station, it's going to be very similar to what you see in Frederick County eventually, but times are changing, and the demand for service is increasing, and we need to move to get a true combination fire department in the county with some centralized administration and control. So, I would encourage if anyone's aware, comes to you or mentions anything about that legislation, especially our friends in the legislature in Frederick County would also support us hopefully on that as that moves through the General Assembly.
Thanks, Bruce.
All righty.
And welcome back. All right, up next, community concerns, citizen comments. Hey, Pete, welcome. Anybody, anybody wants to address the council on any issue, come on up and line up on the wall. Pete, good to see you.
Thank you. Pete Ballas, Mount Airy Town resident, new resident to Wildwood Park, I might add. The last couple of days on social media, I noted that there's some negative comments about the railroad station, the new museum, and the caboose. I'd just like to say, on behalf of the Mount Airy Historical Society, all the members, we are very appreciative that this esteemed body stepped up and purchased the railroad station. Thank you very, very much. I'd also like to say, on Carolyn Mine's behalf, we appreciate having the railroad car here, I think, and we think it adds greatly to our downtown. So, thank you very much, we appreciate.
Thanks, Pete.
So, now, I'm here about the 2018 Hall of Fame for the Mount Airy Historical Society. So, the Mount Airy Historical Society has a new group of inductees in 2018. Tickets are going to go on sale for the Hall of Fame banquet, which will be held at the American Legion tomorrow morning, starting at 10 o'clock, and they will be on sale until the 3rd of March. The only place selling the tickets this year, which are $25, are the Blossom and Basket Boutique, right over on the other side of the historic railroad station. So, this is a great honor for me to announce the honorees for this year, a distinguished group of folks who are very deserving. I would strongly suggest this year, we only receive 200 seats, that tickets will go fast. So, the honorees this year are Paula Camudi, Dr. Emmett Full, Jim Morton, Carl Teen Smith, and Larry Hushower. I think this is an awesome group for this year, and I'd like to thank all the residents of Mount Airy who wrote nomination forms, we appreciate very much, and I hope to see you at our banquet on the 20th of March.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Larry.
Hey, Pete, thanks, and it was a pleasure, once again, serving on the commission to do the selection. That's always, you have to read about a lot of the history of a lot of people in town when you do that, so. And that was March 20th?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
Hi, I'm Alice Suttle Raskin, 1485 Old Annapolis Road, Woodbine, Maryland 21797, and I am here to tell you about this year's farmer's market. The Mount Airy Main Street Farmer's Market will be Wednesdays, 3 to 7, and that's down in the rail yard, next to the historic train station or rail station, and it will tie in nicely with the Rails to Trails, the museum, the historical museum, and the caboose, so that will be a great venue. And Wayne Evans has thought about, has offered to have the museum open if it's open, if it's ready during the market times, so that would be a great venue for you. So, I wanted to let you know that out of the 10 or so previous vendors, we have at least nine returning, and that will be Furnace Hills, Pizza Llama, Five Points Farm, Meat Shack, which is Sturmers Farm, The Honey People, Cannon Aviary, Dough Whisperer, Sugar Thumbs, Dragonfly Sangria, and Bella Valeri's Spicy Spaghetti Sauce. We're still waiting to hear from Single Barrel Soaps, which was two years ago, she's returning, Whispering Breeze Farm, and Pong's Orchard. Now, a couple weeks ago, Kelly Green and I went to, or it was last week, went to Maryland's Best Bar and Grower Expo, that's where you can learn about different foods, meet the farmers, and so it's great, and we've already heard from a salad dressing person, a juice person, we might have hibiscus tea, roasted nuts, and a barbecue vendor. What I am looking for, besides crafts and artisans, I'm also looking for fermented foods. So, if you know of somebody that has their Maryland certifications with acidic foods or fermented foods such as pickles, kimchi, sauerkraut, that would be appreciated, so let the word go out that we're looking for those. I have also been courting a crab vendor, a canned or jarred crab vendor, and they saw me at the Bar and Grower Expo, and they are really considering coming too. So, that's my report.
Very good. Thanks, Alice.
I could not do this without our volunteers, which would be Wayne and Kelly Green, and the other folks that, like Jared Richmond that come, and your wife, that Terry, that comes and does this with me.
One question, what are the dates again?
May 16th through September 26th, 3 to 7, Wednesdays. We are taking off July 4th, but I was thinking of a possible event that we could maybe do over at the fairgrounds that day for the market, so, all right?
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Mary Hushower, West Ridgeway. I am... I am going to talk about fundraising for the train station, the caboose, Rails to Trails, which, it's kind of neat that everything's kind of touching on each other. But the first thing I'm going to talk about is, we have Southwest Airlines tickets, two of them, domestic travel, for sale to benefit the Mounery Historical Society, and they're ten dollars apiece. If you want to see me after the meeting, I have some with me today. There's only going to be three hundred that are going to be offered for sale, so your odds of winning are very good.
I got lucky, ticket number one already, so your chances are all.
There you go. Okay, alright. And the proceeds are going to go to the Historic Mounery Junction Signal Tower, which was the actual signal tower from Mounery, and we're going to have it positioned near the historic train station. So it's really going to be kind of good. So, don't forget to get your tickets from me. And the next is, it's that time, once again, for our annual Boxes and Bags Bingo. And it's going to be on February twenty-fourth, at the Mounery Volunteer Fireman Reception Hall. And we're going to have twenty games, four special, five raffles, door prizes, and a fifty-fifty. If you call three oh one eight two nine eight seven six three, you can reserve your tickets, and we'll have them at the door. Twenty-five dollars gets you two bingo packs for twenty games. Or you can go to www.mounaryrails2trails.com, and you can purchase your tickets with PayPal. And just either print out your receipt, or bring your phone and just show me at the door. So we'll have them. And lots of, I've had a lot of feedback over, this is our fourth year, of having more guy prizes, so we do. We have toolboxes and tackle boxes, and we even have a bark box, and then we have the Vera Bradley bag, so I think everyone's going to have a good time. Thank you very much.
Thanks Mary. You always had a good time, but I was never thrilled about getting a Vera Bradley bag.
No, the toolbox maybe.
It's always a lot of fun, I've really enjoyed that event.
Michael O'Brien, eight oh six Park Avenue. This is a follow-up to Mary. Nancy prepares all the food for this bingo, and she was kind enough to prepare a taster for you.
Nancy made the, well, if I'd have known that, I'd have been over there a lot sooner. I've never tasted anything she made that wasn't delicious.
And thank her for us, we appreciate the popcorn.
This will be available that night.
Carl, if you didn't bring food, you got to sit down.
I can't follow Doc and his wife's cooking, so I don't think you want to try my cooking. Okay, so, I'll stick with Doc's. Carl Munder, two thousand and two, Field Brook Lane, Mounery, Maryland. I just wanted two things here, just, one is another thank you to the town stair, because I stopped one of the hard-working salt truck drivers yesterday, just checking out to see what the roads were like, as they were salting the road in front of me. And he said the roads were fine, but I also want to thank them, because he also indicated that, on his way here, his, his own personal truck ended up going into the ditch, coming, coming here yesterday to take care of the town's roads. So while you see them around town, you might see them, might not, but just thank them for risking their lives coming here, and then taking care of the roads so, so we can get out.
Good point.
Even though we haven't had a bad storm yet, and I hope we don't. Also, the second thing is, it is one of the agenda, so hopefully I can talk about it.
No, that's, this is for, you're right on time.
Exactly, I'm trying to follow the new rules as best I can. It's related to the award of the Downtown Master Plan thing. If, just ask a favor of the town, if the town wants to, could you put the winning scope or the document that they submitted up on the town's website as a PDF, so we all can see?
Absolutely.
How they, what they offered, and everything else.
Sure.
I mean, I mean, is that?
Take care of that on your scratch pad, that's certainly a reasonable offer.
Yeah.
A request.
That's it.
Thanks Carl.
And if, I mean, to follow Bruce's things, if anybody is interested in the bill numbers for the Carroll County Volunteer Fire and Rescue, it's HB nine eighty-four and SB five forty-two for the Maryland.
Thanks.
It should have been, looked like it was introduced tonight, so.
Nice, thank you. Good job Carl. And on that, I guess the idea of posting that, you can sit down, but it does affect what you said. You know, a while back, I kind of tightened up things for town staff. One of those tightenings was, everybody has to have, by first thing Monday morning, to Debbie, anything they want on the agenda, and then by first thing Wednesday morning, they're supposed to have the paperwork that goes with that. One of the reasons for that is, what we're doing now, is when we get our packets on Wednesdays, basically our packet goes on the town website. So you can see, basically, what we are getting, and I had not realized that that was not available in the past. So that is basically now happening. Staff is going to take our packets, other than things that obviously you shouldn't see, like reports on employees and those kinds of things.
Spending of money.
The beer receipts, you know, those kinds of the things, you, you'll basically get our packet, probably, hopefully, Wednesday evening on the town website, so you can see it all, and have a chance to look at it ahead of time. All right, let's move on with the agenda. Two thousand seventeen twenty-one, budget amendment to add landlord contribution to the police station fit-out. Basically, we're just agreeing to accept money here. I will, this was actually here for adoption. I will move, we accept it. Got a second from Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All unanimous to me. All right. Two thousand eighteen one, budget amendment, parks and rec for the Turkey Trot, this is here for introduction. I will introduce it, do I have a second?
Second.
Larry, it's seconded, so that'll come up on next month's agenda. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash two, this is the budget amendment, adding the highway user revenues to our budget. As it turns out, we're going to get about ninety-five thousand more in highway user revenues than we thought, so we need to do a budget amendment to add more money to our budget. It's here for introduc-, for introduction, I'll introduce, you got a second? That's, that's your pen there Bob? That's a second from Bob, all right, that'll be on next month's agenda. All right, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash three, budget amendment, this is ninety-five thousand dollars Rails to Trails, this is for, basically over the Town View. Larry, this is kind of really your, your department.
Yeah, well, certainly, yeah, would like to introduce it and possibly have an emergency adoption on.
I will second as an, as an emergency.
Okay, and I would defer to Barney for discussion on it, so.
Yeah, and we're already paying on this for engineering fees, and we need to continue paying, because they're still doing the work.
Yeah, this is, well, this was on last month's agenda.
Right.
So, and it was out there, I mean, my perspective is, it was out there, it was on last month's agenda, but for the fact that we weren't actually here to just say what Larry and I just said, in order to get, keep paying these people, would have to be an emergency measure. Bob?
I was just curious as to why it was being introduced as an emergency, but you handled that.
That's, that's the reason. We are paying these people from this money, so we need an official.
So, so question, does that mean that we don't have the money right now to pay them, and you need to have it transferred? Or do we have the money, and you're just saying as a formality, you want it transferred to normalize the accounts? Because that's two different things.
The latter.
I, I think it's more of a formality. I mean, we haven't.
We have the money, but you have to prove it.
Fair, so, so we don't need to have an emergency per se? As part of protocol, you could just approve it next month, and we're still paying them regardless. That's what I'm trying to ensure. If you don't have the money, it's an emergency.
We can't spend it unless it goes through a proper process.
Is the money moving from one, one Carson Rex account to another Carson Rex?
Yeah, on this type of, this type of money switch, although we have it, the council has to approve. It's cleaner to do it right. Then we get guys who appreciate the stream.
I was just looking at the, you know, normally, and I'll echo Councilman King's words, emergencies, unless it's truly an emergency, we shouldn't abuse that.
No, I agree, I agree.
If it's not a, it has to be done, because we have the funds, and I'd recommend not doing it as an emergency, just pass it next month.
I think the word emergency ought to be changed to urgent.
If I could add, the only thing I'd add is, I think we pull from the checking account, but when we have to do a transfer, then it'd be nice to have this in place, and I don't know where our funds are in the checking accounts. I can't answer that.
The other issue, one of the reasons when we, you know, when, when we sat down and discussed last month's meeting, whether we're going to have it or not, is we looked at everything on there, and we realized that if it was pressing, we could still do them as emergency measures, keep them on the same schedule.
So I would just.
Because this was agenda'd last month.
Understood, and I just heard Charlene, who kind of looks at the checking account, she says it's fine to handle this, so, again, I, I would just hesitate, I don't think we need to use an emergency just to use it, if she's in charge of checking and says it's fine.
Do you guys approve it, and we'll call whoever you want us to call it?
Are we looking at spending any more than ninety-five thousand, or are we good at that point?
That's all you're going to worry about. And this is for work that's, that's being done, we're, we are paying, what we're doing is, well, Charlene, yes, it's fine out of the checking account, but it's not technically budgeted to come out of the checking account, is that correct?
We've got, paid like twenty thousand dollars worth so far, yeah. It was with the agreement the town made with them, and so we're just following through on our agreement with Town View.
Right.
But as far as the budget amendment, when it's, when it's approved, it, it doesn't matter. We have enough in our checking account to cover it.
That's a fine point.
Okay.
At least they're not just moving the money around without coming and asking us.
Correct. I'd like to thank our former CFO for not shaking his head too much. Okay, well, in order to pass an emergency, we'd need four votes, if it doesn't get four votes, then we'll reintroduce and do it as a third.
Well, it's already intro, do we just go for adoption next month?
Yeah, that's true, we just go for adoption next month. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That was four, all opposed? One opposed, so two to one.
Four, one opposed.
Yep. All right, two thousand eighteen dash four, budget amendment, ninety-five thousand dollars for Rails to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I'm on the right one, I'm on the right one.
Wrong number.
Right line.
Stormwater Management Pond.
Yep.
Make a new design. Yeah, okay, I read the, okay, two thousand eighteen dash three. Okay.
That was the one we just did.
Yeah, wait a minute guys, I got, oh, I was.
This is the revised, twenty eighteen dash four.
Yeah, we just did, we just did three for the ninety-five.
Yep.
So I am, okay, I'm on it, number four, budget amendment, fifty-eight thousand, Twin Ridge, Stormwater Management Pond, okay. And this was also, this is here for, was here for introduction, or emergency adoption. So I will, let's, let me suggest, we find out why they think this needs to be an emergency, and then we introduce from there.
Well, it needs to be introduced, regardless if it's an emergency.
Well, but we'd introduce it either for emergency coverage, or for just a regular, and then do it next month.
Proceed.
So again, the same situation, we're paying the engineers for this, and it's ongoing for Town View, Stormwater Management.
Wait a second, this is.
This is Twin Ridge.
Twin Ridge.
Not Town View.
This is fifty-eight thousand for the Twin Ridge Stormwater Facility.
It's part of our, it's already taxed for climate.
Same thing, different name.
Yeah, this is, this has been going on for a long time, this has, this has been planned for a long time.
Oh, I know that, right.
Twin Ridge, and it was, we got it through an agreement with Carroll County, what, two years ago? And this is one of those things, it doesn't fit in that agreement, but they are, aren't they handling a lot of the?
They're doing the administrative work for us, and we're actually paying for the engineering, design, and construction, so it's, it's part of the rain tax requirement.
And this is to pull money from our Streets and Roads Reserves to pay these people?
Right.
Okay, and so technically, we have no budget line item available to pay these people. Am I right?
Correct. Same situation.
Charlene?
I'm looking.
Okay.
We do have a line item, I'm just not sure what's in there. There is nothing other than the payment to Carroll County for their, you know, overseeing this project and paying for the Carroll County side. So nothing for our construction.
Nothing for our construction.
So this would.
So, okay, so we're paying people, and we haven't budgeted it yet.
Yeah, the Carroll County, when they send us the town-county agreement money, they take their portion out.
Okay.
So they're managing all the projects in Carroll and Frederick County for us, and then they're also doing the construction on the Carroll County side.
Right, but, but, but we are, these guys are doing work, and we are paying them, so we need to.
We are paying, yes.
We need, we need.
There haven't been very many bills come in for that.
I know.
So, so do that end, is it an emergency?
We're working through the design of the facility in Frederick County, so.
You're saying there's not that many bills?
For me, no.
There's money?
There's money, and.
And we haven't seen any bills that look like, in the next thirty days, they're going to. Take out funds?
We do have a contract.
Right, again, it's through Carroll County, they're helping us on the Frederick County side, so this is our Frederick County mitigation.
Totally understand, not saying anything against the work, I'm just looking at the receipt.
It's an emergency, yes.
About, do we need to pay for it right this second, and go through these hurdles, or is it just a, it would be nice if we could, but if it's here next month, great, because one thing that I wanted a little more info, you said, we've known about this for two years or so, and we've been planning for these things, but now we're having an emergency for something that we didn't plan for.
I do, and I will say one, I do think part of the emergency is the fact that we're thirty days late on discussing this, because of.
It was supposed to be for adoption tonight, it was on last month's agenda.
Again, some of these things were from last year, that we, that it just got delayed for one reason or another, and it came into this year, we didn't budget for it, we, we thought we were still buying it, or paying for it out of last year, but the year went, and, and so all that goes away.
Okay.
Since it doesn't carry over.
So again, I'll ask the question, is it really an emergency thing that we need?
I have to defer.
Or is it a, it could wait thirty days until the next billing cycle?
Sure, can answer that question, I think, for us. Yeah, we're fine in the checking account.
So I'll reiterate, as I said before, unless it's really an emergency, I'd hesitate just.
Do you want to move it in as a non-emergency ordinance?
Well, I think it was recommended, I'll move it as a non-emergency.
Yeah.
Was the question asked, is there a benefit of doing it as an emergency?
That's a good question. That would be for Charlene to answer, probably.
But what's the question?
Is there any benefit to us doing it as an emergency?
We keep getting hung up on this emergency thing, and my head's spinning. Is there an advantage?
She just said no.
All right, well, I think we, we saw, we, we had a, we had a motion, and we had a second to handle it as a regular introduction, so it'll be on next month, unless somebody's got a problem with that, I don't think anybody does, so. So Debbie, this is just introduced, it's on for next month. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash five, amend the town code to create chapter thirty-six A entitled Sustainable Mounery Commission, is here for introduction. Jason, this is yours, right, you want to introduce?
Yes, I will, introduce twenty eighteen dash five.
And Bob's, Bob's waving his pen over there, so that's being seconded, we will bring that up for next month. Resolution.
Great job Jason. Thank you.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash one, this to allow beer at Watkins Park for the Avis five K for Down Syndrome run, because it's a resolution, so those are adopted. I will move, we accept the resolution, I see a second from Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All unanimous? All right, resolution two thousand eighteen dash two, this is, our eighteen through nineteen, water and sewer capacity, this is here for adoption.
I know it's going to be adopted, I just had a quick clarifier, is that we have Dick on here.
No, that's, that's, if you see, I have an arrow on my agenda, moving Dick up, so.
Fair. I want to make sure, was that the same thing, and he needs to talk to this?
Yes, yes, I have, I have an arrow on my agenda to move Dick up, because when, when it all came together, we were like, oh, that's the same thing.
Do we need a second?
Um, yeah, I'll introduce it as a water item, you want a second, Bob? Dick, you want to, I know you came here to address us specifically on this, we're, we're just bumping you on the agenda, so we deal with it all at once.
Dick Swanson, Chair of Wardens Sewer, this is the, was it bi-annual water allocation, water sewer allocation for purposes of distribution by the Planning Commission, and we went through the same calculations we did before. We found out that by using those calculations, it would dramatically reduce the amount of water available for development. We looked at the, which is based on the highest of five years, which is two thousand sixteen, what we found out was that two thousand sixteen is not representative, and by that I mean, there were some problems with that, in that there were a lot of false readings by equipment during that year. There was a lot of swapping out of equipment that year, and that the resulting numbers used for this calculation, for the highest of the five years, is probably not realistic when you look at all the other years. We elected on the Water and Sewer Commission to recommend, simply you take the eighty-one thousand gallons that you appropriated in, in two thousand sixteen, reduce it for the amount of permits given out in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and if I have that correct, that's fifty-two thousand four fifty-three available. And that coincides with what Barney Quinn did in his independent calculations, so we are in agreement, and recommend that you allocate the fifty-two thousand four hundred fifty-three gallons.
Basically, Waters' recommendation was kind of staying the course, we're staying with what numbers we'd allocated before, and we. We're staying with what numbers we'd allocated before, um, and we.
This is for residential versus commercial, sorry to cut you off.
Well, that'll be decided by planning.
This is for all, in all, uh, development and redevelopment within the town limits.
Yeah, Water and Sewer is just tasked with every other year, coming up with a number, but then goes to planning, planning gets to parse it out.
I know Barney and I discussed allocations on that.
Well, and there was, um, I'm, I'm thinking maybe we have something incorrect here, because, um, we actually, the Planning Commission has sent to the town council a recommendation that the priority areas be the same. Now, we passed that at our last meeting, um, and I don't see that on here, but I see Dick twice.
Well, Dick is, Dick is actually only going to be once, we're, we merged, we merged new business number three with, uh, this one.
Dick always gets priority.
Um, but why, I would suspect that one of these is supposed to be the, the allocation.
No, they know.
The, the process is you first set what you have available.
Okay.
And then, uh, uh, the next step really, under our ordinances, is that Barney will make a recommendation as to this, the allocation among various allocation categories, one of which is the priority areas.
Right.
Uh, that the Planning Commission has set, and that will actually be a recommendation to this body. And as you'll recall, um, this body ultimately can either accept it, send it back, or even modify it.
Okay, thank you.
This is just the first step in the process, it's just, here's our number, and when we looked at, you know, we were using the high five, as Dick mentioned, we looked at sixteen and we knew during sixteen that because of problems in all of our measuring systems, which we knew were there, we were getting numbers that were just, I mean, if you sat down each month and looked at the numbers, the readings we were getting for water, it was just, it was so unrealistic, I mean, we were like putting far more in the pipes than we were actually taking out of the ground, you know, it just, it never matched up, so. Brian's been working on getting that in line and, and the system is now giving us readings which are more, consistent with what they were for all the years before, so.
Does that, just clarify, does that change the formula for the amount of gallons that we expected? So when we originally did the math to figure out this is how much we can do and we could do a twenty-twenty whatever plan.
Twenty-twenty, and we have eighty-one thousand gallons.
Did that change that number ultimately, because we miscalculated how much water comes out of the ground versus what people are being permitted for and using?
No, so.
Well, I heard a yes and a no.
Those, those numbers do change monthly, so depending on how much water use that we have.
Sure.
Each month and.
But Dick said some things change, so wouldn't the calculation change?
The, the eighty-one thousand gallons is a good calculation.
Okay.
And all the recommendation is, you say, you take that eighty-one thousand gallons that was done back in twenty sixteen, you reduce it for the permits that have been issued in twenty sixteen, twenty.
I understand that math part.
That's it.
Yeah, I got that part, I was, I was worried more about the starting point where you said eighty-one thousand was a good number and based on hearing equipment changed and the amount of water we're pulling out of the ground, this, that and the other, I want to know where the validation was that, yep, eighty-one thousand was a valid number still versus there wasn't some error there and now we're using an error number to calculate another error number.
Eighty-one thousand gallons was done in, in twenty sixteen based on the highest of five years, twenty fifteen back. Twenty sixteen was the abnormal year, so it wasn't included, the eighty-one thousand, so we're, we're good.
We're just throwing twenty sixteen, we're throwing twenty sixteen out of our calculation because it was such a off year due to, I mean, they basically replaced.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to hear validation that, yep, eighty-one still fine, it didn't change.
Basically, they've replaced, they basically, they've replaced the entire monitoring system, and so there was a lot, twenty sixteen was just, uh, we, we didn't think it was valid to use in the calculation.
To, to give you an idea, um, the previous number was based on two thousand eleven, um, our average daily use was six hundred fifty-one thousand. Two thousand sixteen, it jumped up to six hundred, so it went from six fifty-one to six hundred sixty-seven thousand.
So it went up roughly fourteen thousand.
Right, and then, again, two thousand eleven was the highest and it went down for four years and then it jumped up back up in two thousand sixteen and then two thousand seventeen went back down to six oh five.
But that had nothing to do with the fires or anything else that happened where we used a lot of water?
There's a lot of things that happened that could change those numbers.
I mean, we drained three towers.
There's, there's water leaks, there's, uh, could be inaccuracies in the meters.
You, you're telling me you validated, okay, thank you.
It's a three hundred and sixty day, three hundred and sixty-five day average, so the, the, even the fire using up to a million gallons would not significantly change the number, uh, the, the fact of the matter is just, it's the faulty readings in the equipment and the need to swap out equipment to, uh, upgrade that kind of made the, the readings for twenty sixteen invalid, in our opinion. Are not reliable, as I say.
So, so I have one question, just clarifier, you said it really wouldn't change, number's about fourteen thousand. Bruce, how many gallons does one of your tankers hold?
The tanker holds thirty-five hundred, the fire engine holds a thousand.
Okay, so right there's forty-five hundred and you probably filled up maybe three or four times for the number of fires in a year?
Well, we also come back and fill up here for fires outside the town.
Okay, so therefore fourteen thousand could be absorbed as a realistic number.
The guy with spring fire, they came to town and got water.
Mm, yeah, so to say that was abnormal for fourteen thousand, I'm just pointing out, it doesn't sound like it, if, depending on what the fires were in the area, so I think maybe future, we want to look at that too, to say what have we seen in, unless you're.
What, what we've done on, on Water and Sewers, we've looked at charts going back years and we've watched, you know, the water.
Usage go down.
Usage going down, and then all of a sudden, we saw this shoot up in sixteen and then we saw it like right down in seventeen, back to where it was and we knew in sixteen, we had a massive equipment problem where they've been swapping out all their equipment, doing everything, so we looked at sixteen and said, that's just an anomaly. And so we're, so we're not, we're not including that in, in the high five calculation.
I hear, I just know that we don't permit tankers.
I think I understand Scott's confusion, um, there, there are certain terms that we use, part-time grass cutter, twenty-twenty-twenty plan. Okay, and that was sixty thousand gallons that we were going to use and it looks like the starting point here is eighty-one thousand gallons. So I'm, I, I do understand where you're coming from, Scott.
I just, when you start talking numbers and they don't add up.
Really simplify this. This is the third go-round, first go-round, I think, was forty or sixty or something and it was going to be allocated twenty-twenty-twenty over a number of years. Second go-round, we recalculated due to the, the changes and reduction in usage, it was eighty-one thousand available for development and redevelopment. This is just a simple update on the same basis, that it, it, and fires over the years really haven't changed or significantly impacted the, uh, three hundred and sixty-five day average of how many gallons a day is pumped out of the ground. It, it really doesn't make that big a difference, we, we do two hundred million gallons in a year.
No, I don't think it.
So a million isn't going to make that much difference.
I won't belate the pumping out of ground versus consumption, consumption's different, when you're using the permitted users that are drawing out and you're looking at how many people were permitted versus the number of tankers that go and fill up off of our water supply, that's different, because when we have a tanker roll up, do you know how many gallons are pulling out of the ground, or out of our system every time?
No, because we don't measure that, but.
So, to that end, a fourteen thousand gallon discrepancy could be due to the number of fires that they were being supported.
No, all numbers are based on what's pulled out of the ground regardless of whether it goes to fight fires, it goes into a business, a home or, and what I'm saying is that there, there is really not a significant impact from any one singular event or every several events of similar nature, i.e. fires.
I have a pen, there is.
It really doesn't, it really doesn't affect the numbers.
If I could just bring this back around, just so everyone knows, and since we have the former mayor here, the town, you're watching all these numbers going spinning since the consent agreement, the building moratorium back in two thousand six when Mayor Frank Johnson was mayor, we've been very sensitive and cautious about our water usage. And that is what you're seeing here tonight. What's the next issue on the agenda?
Oh, sewer, just when you.
That's where the water goes, so it's good, Mr. Mayor, bringing it full circle.
Water and Sewer's recommendation, after going over this for a long time, was to stay the course, we're basically saying, stick with the same numbers we had. Just reduce by what we've given away already. Barney did his own calculation, his recommendation is the same as Water and Sewers. It is for the council to accept the recommendation, which then will go to planning for allocation. And then it'll get bounced around and everything else, and, uh, on the sewer side, nothing of any consequence, I mean.
Right.
Basically the same thing, so any, any further questions on this one?
Nope.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Peter, did we just pass this?
Yes. Uh, Monica, master plan.
Okay, so this is, um, to recommend bid award for the downtown master plan. As, just to give a little background, we, um, released the RFP in July of, of last year and we had a deadline of August thirty-first in twenty seventeen, so we actually had about eighty inquiries for the downtown master plan, we looked at ten full proposals that met the deadline and met the requirements. Out of that ten, we interviewed four firms, um, Bill was part of that process too, um, we narrowed that down to two firms. Barney and I basically called references, many references on both of those firms. And so we narrowed it down to the last one that we thought was the best fit for us, they have a really good reputation for actually implementation of their plan. Good community outreach, um, their team's been together a very long time and they've done lots of, lots of master plans, so. That proposal is by Design Collective for a hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. That's a full comprehensive downtown master plan study with transportation and marketing components. We're also going to look at utility infrastructure in that too, um, we've never had any marketing study done in the downtown area. As you know, in the RFP, it does include Center Street area, um, all of the buildings that we currently own, the Flatiron Building, parking issues, et cetera, et cetera, so. We are recommending the approval of the bid award to Design Collective for a hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars for the Mount Airy Downtown Master Plan Study. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I think Larry said it best when he said it really pulls together about five or six different large projects.
Yes, it does.
Under one umbrella.
And Peter, I would like to, I would like to make that motion.
Go ahead, Bob.
It's made, we, we.
I will, I will, I will second it then, Bob. Any, uh, any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Is there any reason why I can't just, you know, see Carl here, but I can't just give Carl my copy? Because this is what he was asking for, right?
Sure, yes, you.
Yeah, but he wanted it on the website, which.
Yeah, but I think he'd probably rather have the hard copy.
He can have whatever he wants, but.
I think he wants to see the RFP. He wants to see the RFP that.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I have a few notes in mind, but none of them are all that critical when he can't read my handwriting anyways.
I'll make sure he gets it, I'll email it to him.
Okay.
We'll put it on there, but I'll also email Carl.
Okay.
Is RFP on the web?
But thank you very much.
Is it too much, then we make it available.
Bob, number two, chili cook-off, or, or Larry, either of you guys want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion, we close the road on Saturday, April the seventh, from about six AM.
Six-thirty to five-thirty is on here.
Six-thirty to five-thirty.
Well, that was an easy decision.
It says six-thirty on here.
The email came out, six o'clock.
Six AM is what we're actually asking.
Yeah, that was actually done after a couple surveys and several meetings.
It's been, it's been a rough chili cook-off, but we are rolling with this now.
We let the citizens have voice and I'm proud the way it was handled, good job.
You know, I want to, I, I really want to thank Mr. Hushour and Don Marie Needle from the, from the, um, Economic Development Commission, they have worked very hard on this. I think Larry and I have probably, until this past weekend, it's about twelve days in a row, we held hands and sang songs.
Well, and don't forget the staff that put the surveys together.
Absolutely, absolutely, and the staff is working very hard today to make sure that we can make this happen by April the seventh. So Larry, thank you, staff, thank you, and Don Marie, thank you.
Larry, were you, uh, Bob moved it, were you seconding it, Larry?
I'm actually going to abstain from the vote because I'm knee-deep into the chili cook-off.
I see Scott seconding it, um, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Had four with one abstention. I look forward to it, forward to that event every year, it's always a lot of fun.
Two.
Now, any reports?
It's always tough to decide if I'm going to judge or eat chili all day, because you can't do both.
There's, there's going to be, there's going to be a couple of added things, where we're doing restaurant chili, um, Jeff from Conchettis is going to handle the restaurant chili category. And we're looking at individuals that will get more into the, oh, they, you know, how do you cook chili without beans is their question, so.
All right. Okay, on to the, uh, mayor and council reports.
Okay, winter weather, as a reminder, residents are reminded that they should be clearing their sidewalks within twenty-four hours of snowfall. This not only helps our pedestrians stay safe, it allows our children to get to their bus stops. I'd like to thank those to the community who already chip in, they clear out the bus stops, they clear out the hydrants. And it's very important to keep those hydrants clear of snow, uh, you never know when it might be your house that needs to have a fire put out. This helps the fire and rescue workers, uh, that may be delayed otherwise in clearing. So thank you very much for that, town safety, with an increase in joggers on our roadways due to Jason's new healthy initiative. I don't actually think it's your new healthy initiative, but there's a lot more out there, and I hope it does. As a reminder, if you're out there in the streets at dark, especially in the morning, please try to wear a flashing beacon or reflective clothing. People that are rushing to work in the morning may not see you, and I apologize to the one person that I hit this morning. Uh, no, that didn't happen either. Town budget, understanding the process, each year, the mayor, after working with staff, presents a draft budget. This is an important starting point, uh, for the town council's consideration, the man, the mayor's role remains important as the chief financial officer. But it is then the town council which much consider and approve or not, and during the discussion, the town council will also hold a series of public workshops that you, the community, are invited to attend. Once the budget is returned to me, I will handle the day-to-day operations. Mount Airy train stations, I'd like to, uh, compliment Councilman Scott Strong, he came up to me a couple weeks ago, he says, you know, Pat, you you got to start updating on a few of these items, and the next few items are Scott, he wanted to know what's going on with the train station and a few other things. The renovations by Hampton Builders will be substantially complete by the end of February, there have been some posts on Facebook, I didn't see a negative comment, I'm sorry to see that, but it's going to happen, uh, as some of you may know, we found some graffiti inside of there going back to one of the mayors from the forties. And, uh, I don't know if my mic's here, going back to the forties and we've decided, and we, oh, yeah, no, not me. And we've decided to keep that graffiti and not take it down.
That was before my time.
So, uh, we're, we're, we're very happy about that, uh, we'd also like to thank Dr. O'Brien, who is using his awesome woodworking skills to help do some creative things the same way he did as the train, thank you, Doc, it's, it's, you know, citizens like you that make this town special, we wouldn't have this without you, so, thank you. We do anticipate a grand opening in two thousand eighteen. Ten-ten Main Street, people are looking at that, wondering what's going on up there. You can read my mayor's report, we basically gave him sixty days to get property fixed up, he submitted a text amendment for townhomes. It is technically residential, as townhomes may work within the proper context or, uh, density, uh, we are looking at, but in the meantime, uh, I do want to remove aggressively on having that property shielded with some type of black tarps, it's an eyesore, it needs to be fixed. We have given him time, probably more time than we should, that's what we try to do in Mount Airy, but enough's enough. Scott, again, asked about the Leashere Harrison property, uh, Barney can correct me, but I believe the well testing was successful, uh, and successfully completed, and within a few weeks, we should know more about the potential groundwater appropriations that the town could receive, the water quality testing resulted in clean water with, uh, slightly high nitrate level, I guess being around.
That's common, that's common right here.
Uh, it's anticipated to be prior, uh, testing, uh, prior to putting, it's a water station number two upgrade. Just so you all know, before anything would move forward on this property, you've heard us talking about it, there would be substantial community outreach and the community would get a chance to. Look at this, right now, we're just seeing it functionally, it'll work, if it does functionally work, then we'll bring proposals forward for the community. Again, downtown master plan, Monica touched on that, I'll, I won't go any further, and the most exciting part of my job, and many of you councilmen have joined me, is if I were mayor contest, so, that'll be coming up and it's kind of interesting, especially given my next note. This year's theme is live to lead, so, citizens always.
And that, that's an MML.
That's the MML.
MML project also.
Yes, that is, that is correct. I will be recommending for reappointment, Mr. Jimmy Linton to do recycling and, uh, hold on now, Tom Neff to recycling and sanitation and Jimmy Linton to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission.
I'll also move, also move both of those appointments, you got a second, second from Scott, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I do have one additional item, uh, this is not strictly town business, it's of personal nature, but I do want to share with you. Uh, in doing so, I have to admit that after fifteen years of working on town issues, commissions, and as your mayor, it seems appropriate to make this announcement to you, my friends and neighbors. That announcement is that I am, like many others, have faced a new challenge. I've been diagnosed with cancer of the esophagus. I am fortunate to say there is a treatment plan that I'm qualified for, through John Hopkins.
I am fortunate to say there is a treatment plan that I'm qualified for through John Hopkins, which requires me to be in excellent overall health. And the prospects are very good for a positive outcome. To take care of this, of course, there are no guarantees. But the treatment will take, the treatment will take about two months. And while I'm not a doctor, and I can't tell you the details or the ins and outs, we are hopeful this will, this will put everything in remission. I want to make clear for all of you, I'm not going to go anywhere. I will, like Governor Hogan a few years ago, and like so many others who have faced the same challenge, continue to do my job and serve the public. It is that I will sometimes ask my colleagues to assist in specific areas or step in at times when I can't be there. I know what kind of community we are and how we share a basic commitment to each other. I appreciate everyone's kindness and decency, Mary, Larry, Scott, Bob, Jason, all, if they reach out to me, Peter. I appreciate your well wishes, your prayers, certainly welcome. I will work through it, even as I do recognize at some level, we will work through it, too. And I hope in some way, maybe I can serve as an inspiration for so many others who face challenges. I would like to quote our great Governor Hogan. "There is reason to be optimistic. The fact is that I am just like the more than seventy-five thousand people diagnosed with cancer every single year, who fight it, they beat it, and they continue doing their jobs at the same time. I can and will do no less." I and my daughter Sierra thank you all for your prayers and support, so thank you all very much. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Pat. Larry.
All right, since we haven't met in a couple of months, at the council table, the beautification report, they took down the decorations after Christmas, and out on the caboose as well as around the train station. They're currently in the process of purchasing stones for Bryson Field and Wildwood Park. Trash mob, Jan Timmerich, is doing a great job, picked up over two-hundred pounds of garbage. I forget if that was over January or over December, but she's always out there picking up garbage with a handful of volunteers, so. And it's starting to catch fire because even the Rotary Club's talking about putting together a day to go out there with her and pick up more garbage. Tina's been out there walking Wendy Ridge Park and trying to figure out what kind of plantings, additional plantings to do along Wendy Ridge. And, let's see, it came up a couple of months ago about the Twin Arch Crossing Park not having a regular park sign. So, so they're making sure they add that into the budget per the one councilman's recommendation. As far as parks goes, we did meet with Sabra Wang. We had a kickoff meeting on December eighteenth prior to Christmas. I had officials here from the State Highway Administration, Carroll County, Carroll County Parks and Rec, the Maryland Department of Environment, and staff personnel. That kicked off a meeting that ended up with a second meeting on January fifth, where we discussed ways to get across Highway twenty-seven. A little bit of background, in case I'm losing some of you. Sabra Wang is the company that is looking at doing three things for us. A master plan of rails to trails, a thirty percent engineering diagram to get across Highway twenty-seven, and, and then submit the TAP grant, which is Transportation Alternative Program. It's a State Highway Administration grant to figure out how to get safely across Highway twenty-seven. So, they have some good ideas, nothing's definite now, but they would like to come to the March council meeting, and I believe the staff is trying to figure out a chronology of if we have a public forum prior to that or if we do something after that. So, I'm going to have to talk with you all after the meeting about the logistics of that. The caboose pavilion project is still underway. Barney and I met with CAD Works again to talk about a new design because the design that we originally picked out required six footers to be dug around the caboose, and there was a serious concern that the caboose might list. The initial hope was that we could tie into the existing foundation, which would have made it, you know, just go like clockwork. But having to dig footers has complicated the process. So, what we're trying to do is figure out how to, how to do something that's similar to a station platform, like you would see at a, at a passenger station. So, anyway, so we're, we're working toward that. The Mount Airy Community Fund still has their grant, so hopefully the lion's share of the cost is covered by a nonprofit. Twin Arch basketball, we put up two temporary hoops up there, and they keep getting either blown down or destroyed. So, our last one got caught up in the windstorm, so it's, it's still standing, but it's, it's leaning up there. That was our temporary fix. We have an RFP out on the street, Sean Byrne, our parks manager, has, has that out on the streets. It's due back, I believe, February eighth is the last day on that, to get bids on building a basketball court in the Twin Arch Crossing Park. So, that's kind of where we're at on that. Pickleball is still on our shortlist. Every time we have a Parks and Rec meeting, we're talking about restriping the tennis court so that we can have pickleball. If you don't know what pickleball is, you'll, you'll figure it out because it's, it catches like wildfire. So, the caboose is going to be shut down for the month of February, just because everybody's been so busy, including our lady who works the Sign Up Genius program. So, normally, we're open Saturdays noon to four, but we're going to take the month of February off to give our volunteers a break. I see Mark back there, Mark's been sitting in the caboose, Doc, thank you. So, all the volunteers that have come out and sat in the caboose, I really appreciate it, but take a month off. So, we talked about the chili cook-off, that'll be fun. And skate park is the last thing on here. We've had a lot of discussion about the skate park at Parks and Rec meetings because we're at a point with the skate park where either we need to refurbish it and turn it into a modern-day skate park, or we need to tear it down and remove it. Because all the structures that are in our skate park that have been there since about the turn of the century now, we've screwed so much skate light into them that there's, there's nothing left to screw into. So, so it's actually becoming to the point that we have to start closing off pieces of it as they become dangerous. So, that's a discussion that's going on at Parks and Rec. And what we're trying to do is set up a date, our parks manager is trying to set up a Parks and Rec meeting where people can come and give us their ideas about if it's worth keeping that skate park going or if we transition that surface to something like an inclusive playground or, or something else, a pavilion. You know, so, we're seeking input from the public on that, and so that's kind of where we're going. Has anybody got any questions about that or at this point? Okay, so we're kind of heading that way. So, that concludes my report.
No, just on the skate park, there's also an opportunity, and we're going to present to our Parks and Recs for some ideas, some workstations, workout stations.
Yes.
And complement the use of that area well. It may not, depending on how you all recommend.
Larry, I think the workout stations, are they going to be all the way around the, the trail?
It's the two choices we're going to talk to Parks about. It may be better for a lot of security reasons and other reasons, have them in central location, and set them playing very nicely.
All of, all of the potential closed meetings look like they're Parks-related. Do we need any of those?
For tonight?
For tonight.
We do have at least two pieces of property to talk about.
Okay, then we will, then, then we'll keep it on, okay. I was just wondering if we were going to do it or not, okay. EDC planning, Bob?
Okay, the last second Mountain Development Commission meeting was on January the twenty-fourth. The ICS sanctioned chili cook-off will be held on April the seventh, two thousand and eighteen, ten a.m. to five p.m. The Business Card Exchange, held on December the sixth last year, was a huge success. Thanks to the town staff and members of the commission for making this event better and better every year. Don Marie Needle, the EDC chairwoman, I've been attending many downtown meetings. MANDA, Downtown Merchants Association, our EDC meetings, and we're trying to get to the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce meetings. Hopefully, that'll, that'll happen real soon. Reps from these organizations are attending our meetings, too, so we're trying to, to try, trying to tie the whole business, the business and downtown businesses together through EDC. Let's see, we were informed that Mr. Innes Distillery is attempting to purchase the bank building to have the capacity to increase production, storage, and aging. Stay tuned. Let's see, EDC, I reported a little bit on the downtown master plan award and the schedule. Next EDC meeting will be February the twenty-eighth, seven p.m., right here in Town Hall. Planning Commission meeting was held on January the twenty-ninth. Public hearing on the proposed designation of priority areas for water and sewer allocations for the next two years was accomplished. The Planning Commission's recommendation from two thousand and sixteen remains unchanged. Downtown master plan will be awarded at the February Town Council meeting. Presentation and discussion on Frederick County's livable Frederick Master Plan by the Frederick County Planning Commission was submitted for our review and comment in the next sixty days. The Maryland Planning Commission Association Board met. Bill Butts and Roxanne Hempel didn't get out of there fast enough, and they were appointed to the board. The next Planning Commission meeting will be on February the twenty-sixth. Maryland Municipal League, Frederick County Chapter, we met on December the sixth. Okay, so I left the Business Card Exchange to go to an MML meeting in Frederick. MML president, New Market Town Councilman Jake Romanel, presided. The two thousand and eighteen legislative priorities include returning highway user revenues to their two thousand and eight levels. Municipalities have lost over three-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars since two thousand and nine, when Governor Martin O'Malley diverted that money to the state. Due to increase in Maryland Public Information Act requests, many citizens' telephone numbers and email addresses are ending up on some of this, some of this stuff that's, and, and what, what MML is pushing is scrubbing that information, leave their name, but not their email address. These are using to, you know, define lists for people. They go and, and get a Public Information Act request, and they get email address and cell numbers. This, we have, we use those for things like emergency alerts, town newsletters, transportation and public work updates, and recreation updates. Want to try to scrub those things off before they're given out in Public Information Act requests in the state of Maryland. And our final priority this term is the ability of municipalities to retain authority over the placement and fee collection from small cell equipment towers. And these are basically, they're used, four or five blocks is their effective area. They're used to enhance your cell level and give you, give you a whole bunch of, of bang for your buck in downtown areas. So far, federal law grants such authority, but the state of Maryland remains silent right now. The next MML Frederick County Chapter is on February the twenty-second, and that's it. That's all my report.
All right, thanks, Bob.
At MML, they'll have companies there that actually sell advice and consulting on those towers, how to get the most out of them. I'm sure you've been hit.
Well, maybe they have them at the conventions and stuff, or at the, we don't, we don't see them down there, though.
All right, sanitation, recycling, sustainable Maryland.
All right, just to update you, Tom Neff is now our chairperson for recycling and sanitation.
Good thing we just reappointed him then.
Yeah, I was just crossing my fingers on that one. Essentially, we worked on budgetary items for the upcoming fiscal year, dealt with a lot of resident concerns with the Christmas tree pickup. And essentially, in our contract, it is, that is finalized. There was no yard waste pickup on that particular day. It's just something that was understood that they would do that. But in our contract, it is only for a Christmas tree pickup, not a yard waste. J&amp;J was nice enough to go back out for those residents that did have yard waste bags out. They did drive a whole separate truck back out to take care of that, to make sure that our residents were taken care of. A few people were having some discussions with the workers. We do ask all residents to refrain from having any discussion with the guys that are working on the truck. They're told what to pick up and what not to pick up, and having a resident try to communicate with that to them is, is not really appropriated. So, please refrain from doing that. We did schedule our bulk trash pickup day, that is on April twenty-eighth. We asked that you have everything by the curb by six o'clock a.m. on April twenty-eighth. We also scheduled our shredding and battery recycle.
Two items, Jason, two items for bulk trash.
Two items. We also did schedule our shredding and battery recycle, that is May nineteenth, at Watkins Park from nine to twelve. And in consideration with taxes and everything else, feel free to bring your information over there. We'll take care of that for you.
Two thousand and ten taxes.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking the exact same thing.
Frank, not, not your, not your two thousand and eighteen.
Please, please, please. We'll take care of that, too. Next meeting for recycling and sanitation is March twenty-first at seven p.m. And hopefully, our Mount Airy Sustainable Commission meeting with a new name will be February twenty-first at seven p.m. And that concludes my report.
All right, Streets and Roads, Scott?
So, Streets and Roads did not have a meeting in December. We didn't really have any topics to discuss at that time. The only thing to bring up is that our next meeting will be on the twenty-second of this month at seven-thirty p.m.
All right, Water and Sewer. Our next meeting will be February seventh, which is this Wednesday, at seven o'clock in this room. You got most of our report from Rick, that's, I mean, from, from Dick, that's most of what we've been working on. We are looking at whether or not we're going to make a recommendation involving a change in the rates because we are seeing a repeating and slowly increasing deficit in the water and sewer department. So, we're, we're looking at that, we'll give you a report.
The only thing I do suggest when you look at that, look at the reserves that we also have in the water departments. I don't look at it through blinders. We have a lot of money in the water reserve, be very cautious. And anything we do, going back to, again, the mayor Johnson, since they got them here incrementally and small, is always best, so.
Yeah, we, what we're looking at is like maybe adding a couple bucks to the base rate or something. It's like, Monica, I guess we've got your report, but anything?
I have a few things. Just, just a reminder, during the winter weather season, please check the State Highway Administration website for traffic conditions. And accidents on the main line routes, live traffic camera views are available, and they're very helpful during inclement weather. You can find them on your phone at www.marylandfiveoneone.org. We are going to be doing construction on the Marydale Gardens Stormwater Management Pond in the spring. That's been designed, engineered, and Tom just went through the process of getting that property in our ownership and delineating the boundaries and all that. So, that's going to be under construction in the spring. Staff is looking at additional traffic speed signage on Marydale Boulevard near the nursing home, even though that road's currently posted at fifteen miles an hour. People are still whizzing down, you know, after they stop at that first stop sign, they're still picking up speed as they go towards Park Avenue. So, we're going to meet with some signage people, actually this week, and look at what, what we can post there. And then the last thing I have is, you know, when you use those recreational fire pits, some people are burning yard waste. Please don't do that because it causes all kinds of problems. Just use a temporary, you know.
A little, a little report I file, don't worry about it.
That's it.
All right, Town Attorney Report, Tom?
Over the last month, I've worked on the Marydale Stormwater Management. We've finalized the, the boundaries of the part that the town's going to take. We'll therefore file a motion, and we have a hearing in front of the court, a status conference on February twenty-eighth. So, hopefully, at that conference, the order will come down and will be all set there. I've also worked on the Dorsey Town Annexation Petition. That'll be up for introduction, depending on if they meet the requirements next time in March. I've also worked, actually quite extensively, with Heather on a, some issues with the setbacks that have been proposed for the development at Cold Storage called Prospect Place. Also worked on the, a little bit with Barney on the water and sewer allocation issue that you all had for you, as well as a Public Information Act request. And that's my report.
All right. I'm going to move that we go into a closed meeting for the purpose of securing acquisition of real property for a public purpose, and that we be adjourned, adjourned when we are done with that closed meeting. We'll have a second, have a second for Bob. Got to go around the table, Councilman Ken. Got to go around the table. Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Porter?
Aye.
Councilman Hell, aye. Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Okay.
Is that one you can abstain to?
You can.
I guess you can abstain for it.
I'm not going to participate.